Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 6th Mount Vernon School Board meeting. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I do roll call? Trustee Middleton?
Here.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Engenga?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee Lancy?
Here.
Trustee Kerwin?
Here.
VP White?
President.
President Saunders?
Here.
Okay, we have a call home. Again, good evening. Welcome to this July 6th, 2023 annual reorganizational meeting of the Mount Vernon Board of Education. Our first order of business is to swear in trustee Warren Mitchell and our student trustee, Anna DeLeon.
I'm Warren Mitchell.
Solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and have a faithfully discharge the office of school board trustee according to the best of my ability.
I, Anna DeLeon, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the office of student board trustee according to the best of my ability.
Okay. Our next order of business is for the nomination of president for the 2023-2024 school year. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for president of the school board for the 2023-2024 school year. Need a motion? Motion.
Second.
And who are you nominating? Motion to nominate? Who? I nominate Warner, trustee Warner Kerwin.
I second it.
Any other nominations? Okay. At this time, may I have a motion? I have a motion on the floor from President Saunders and Lancy for Warner Kerwin to become the president. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna open the floor for nomination of vice president for the 2023-2024 school year. First motion?
Nominate Sabina Kelly.
Oh, I'll second it. Any more nominations? Okay, I have a nomination for Sabina Kelly to be school board vice president for the 2023-2024 school year with a motion from trustee Lancy and second from Wanda White. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Motion carries.
Swear them in and I'll move around.
Okay, yes. I'm ready to swear you both in. I would do President Kerwin first and then I'll do Vice President Kelly. If everybody just shifts down one.
I, Warner Kerwin, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the office of school board president according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I, Sabina Kelly. Solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the office of vice president according to the best of my abilities.
Rojee. Guess my name, please. Congratulations again to everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our annual agenda. So the first one is 4.1, approval of annual appointments of officers' resolutions 4.2 to 4.3. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Do a second.
I did.
I'm getting used to where everything is. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.1, approval of annual appointments, resolution 5.2 to 5.14? Motion. Do a second. What's that? Mm-hmm, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.1, approval of annual designations, resolution 6.2 to 6.5? Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.1, approval of annual authorizations, resolution 7.2 to 7.8?
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, all persons and positions required by law or regulations to be bonded? Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, approval of annual resolutions, 9.2 to 9.8? Motion. And your second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter? Executive session, can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
How long? Dr. Smith, about how long do you think? Yeah, we'll be back. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna be entering executive session. We'll be back probably about an hour. We're trying to make it less than an hour, but we'll probably be back about around an hour. Thank you. Can I have a motion to exit, adjourn, or executive session?
Motion.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to resume public session? Motion. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board president, board trustees, and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Norma Lisa Thomas.
Good evening. Dr. Smith, Acting Superintendent, members of the trustee board, greetings. My name is Norma Lisa Thomas. I have served the Mount Vernon City School District and community for over 35 years as a music teacher and administrator. I am currently the orchestral director, piano instructor, advanced placement for music theory instructor, smart scholars instructor for music appreciation, and the Saturday Arts Academy teacher at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts. I stand before you tonight to pose this question. What is wrong with the Denzel Washington School of the Arts leadership and why do we need a new principal? We are the Denzel Washington School of the Arts and we deliver excellence in the arts and academics. Our first graduation rate was 100%. The second was 98. In this past year, we're also 98 because two students have moved away. This took a lot of work and leadership from our visionary principal. Our principal was removed from our school without any explanation, and in her absence, our school's purpose and direction has lost its way. I want to share with you the words of one of our students, Brielle Henderson. Oh, we're not supposed to mention names, I'm sorry, who is a rising 12th grader. Upon coming to Denzel Washington School of the Arts, she's been blessed with opportunities to actualize her goal of becoming a professional dancer. The school's connection with Dance Theater of Harlem and the Harlem School of the Arts has led her to places that she thought she would be unimaginably given, the circumstances as a black girl in an under-resourced city. It is with due respect to the chances that she's received from Denzel Washington School of the Arts that she announced there was no one else within our community that has proven to possess the connections that has encouraged students to hone in on their creative and academic edge. Our principal founded this school, Denzel Washington, under the former superintendent. Our principal gave birth to Denzel Washington School of the Arts. She guided it from her heart and maintained a commitment to excellence. Emphasis is placed on raising our region's scores across the board in all academic subjects. No one else understands the vision, mission, or purpose of why this school is so uniquely designed. Our principal is also an artist who produces and directs exceptional productions with professional expertise. She is a rare gift to Mount Vernon. Shame on Mount Vernon City School District if you allow anything to happen based on personal or political issues or difference of opinion. It is not as simple as replacing our leader. The decision will impact our students, parents, staff, and the community for years to come. The previous two superintendents understood the value of the arts. There is nothing wrong with Denzel Washington School. We do not need new leadership. Our school is successful in meeting all expectations. One person should not be allowed to recommend this action. Trustee members, I implore you not to move forward with removing our highly effective principal. Thank you.
Rojay Denton?
Good afternoon. My name is Rojay Denton, and I have been voted as a class president for the seniors of 2024, and I speak on behalf of my school. This past year has not been the same. Dr. Collins is not just your typical principal. She presents herself to be a mother the way she looks after each and every one of us and makes us feel at home. And that's just the thing. Denzel Washington is not just a school. We view it as a home, a home where learning and personal growth is promoted. My classmates are my brothers and sisters because I've been with them since the sixth grade. And as I enter my 12th grade year, the brotherhood and sistership is so strong, words cannot describe it. And that's all because of the home our principal has made. The experiences Dr. Collins created for us is unmatched. Some of my favorites being getting to meet Denzel Washington for the first time and shaking his hand, or even receiving a starring role in the soldiers play as I played C.J. Memphis, and I had a blast. I will never forget being a part of the Lion King production as our whole school took part and we were able to bring Mount Vernon together in a time of need. Dr. Collins has always taught us to be the best version of ourselves. Be better than the person you were yesterday and never be afraid to fail because that's how you learn, and those are life lessons I live by. When I first shake Dr. Collins' hand for the first time in sixth grade, I never expected to take this journey, and I'm glad I did. I want to shake Dr. Collins' hand one more time when I walk the stage in June of 2024 to officially end my high school journey. Thank you.
Shawn Harris?
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Smith, and congratulations trustee president on your and the other trustee, Mr. Mitchell, on your appointment tonight. My name is Shawn Harris. The reason why I stopped by tonight is I'm a son of this city, a product of this school district. I served this city in the police department for over 25 years, rising to the position of police commissioner. One of my favorite positions as a police officer was a school resource officer. In this district, I forged a lot of good relationships with the students. As a matter of fact, I have one that ran into me yesterday in Woodbury Commons. I recently heard of a position opening up for director of security. I was told that it was a resume. I submitted my resume. Then I came in today and found out that it was a RFP. Where was the RFP put out at? Usually everything is on OLOS. That's what I monitor. E-reporter for New York State contracts wasn't there. I was told that it went out on the local newspaper. Where's the local newspaper? Who reads a local newspaper, especially for RFPs? I went on BidNet, which I was told that it was posted on. It's gonna cost over $1,000 just to register. New York State E-reporter is free. I own a company that I started to provide our people jobs. I'm a certified MBE and a certified service-disabled veteran in old business. And it pains me that this whole process, and I'm gonna put it here on the record, to me, is for gazing. I'm putting that on the record. It doesn't seem like it was on the up and up. And yeah, I'm pissed because I was not given the opportunity to serve my city once again. And I know, and I'm waiting to see, what I wanna see is, I wanna see the newspaper article that was posted, and I wanna see what was posted on BidNet. And if I'm not afforded that opportunity, then I will take further legal matters. Thank you.
Amaya Lewis?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amaya Louie. I have been attending the Denzel Washington School of the Arts for five years, going on to my sixth and senior year. And our principal has always strived to provide her students with a safe school environment as she does her best to protect her students and staff from any form of danger or harm, both inside and outside of school. She encourages her students to aim for success and greatness and allows us to express our creative visions in various ways. She gives us multiple opportunities that prepare us to pursue our goals and dreams in life that no other school in Mount Vernon is able to offer. Dance majors were offered to a meet and greet with Misty Copeland and performed for Jamal Fields Green from the MJ musical. Malik Yoba visited theater majors for a master class. Technical theater majors go on trips to see Broadway shows in order to get a wider understanding of the importance of their work. And art majors have visited museums to deepen their love for their major. Orchestra and band majors have traveled out of the state to a competition that they won. Orchestra majors also have master classes at Carimore Arts with string musicians from Juilliard. Our principal also keeps us on top of our schoolwork as she makes sure it is just as much of a priority as the arts. This has taught me to focus more on my studies and take them seriously to prepare not only for college, but my future. I have been in several productions and musicals throughout my time in this school, and the feedback that we get from the community is amazing. Our principal is not only a huge asset to the students and staff of DWSA, but to our community as well. The list goes on, but the point is that the motives of our principal are very positive and help students become inspired greatly. The strong bond that our principal creates with her students is one like no other and is further proof that she cares dearly for her students. Our principal has greatly impacted the lives of 400 students, their parents, and the entire Mount Vernon School District community. Her leadership style has brought respect and honor to the arts through talented and passionate students like me. As I approach my senior year, I cannot see my principal not being there. Please return our principal. Please take into consideration what amazing things our school has done for the community and everything. Please, we need our principal back. Please bring her back. Thank you.
Brielle Henderson? Brielle Henderson? No. Anisa Vincent? Anisa Vincent? Destiny Crump?
Good evening to all in attendance tonight, and congratulations to trustee Warren Mitchell on being sworn in tonight. Oh. Once again, congratulations to trustee Warren Mitchell on being sworn in tonight, as well as the new president and vice president of the board. Congratulations. I would like to use my time to read into public record, School Board Policy Number 3220 in regards to communication from the public at school board meetings. In its entirety, the policy reads as follows. Members of the public, including the press, are welcome to attend all meetings of the Board of Education, subject to any limitations under applicable laws, including public meeting laws. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Any resident of Mount Vernon or any student, parent, or guardian of a student, teacher, administrator, or employee of the Mount Vernon City School District are permitted to speak. No other person shall be permitted to speak without the approval of the board. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person, by phone, or by email. by contacting the district clerk in person, by phone, or by email. When registering, speakers are requested to indicate the nature of their remarks, for example, whether comments relate to a specific item on that meeting's agenda, to a concern about a particular school, or to a general concern of the district. The Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. In no event shall public comment exceed 30 minutes total at any one meeting unless all board trustees in attendance consent to grant additional time. In the case of a special board meeting with business conducted in public session, as opposed to a special board meeting consisting only of an executive session, public comment shall be permitted. However, all public comment at such a special board meeting must pertain exclusively to one or more items on that meeting's scheduled agenda. A speaker wishing to make comments of any other nature may do so at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. The foregoing paragraphs two, four, six, and seven, and in the case of a special board meeting, paragraph six, oop, excuse me, paragraph nine, shall be read to the public by the district clerk immediately prior to opening a school board meeting to the cu- school board meeting to public comment. I read that public policy, um, into record to ask, ask trustees, what is your interpretation of this policy, especially in regard to sections two and nine? Thank you.
Brenda Crump.
Good evening. I'm Brenda L. Crump. I reside at 432 Dunham Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, 10553. And I'm just going to come in on, emphasize a couple of points in reference to what Destiny Crump has read with the policy. And I too asked the question and would like to hear some public discussion, discussion before the public as to what the interpretation of the policy is. Each board member, and we do have our attorney here and at the direction of our president, she can ask him for his legal interpretation for us. I want to focus in on number two. That, uh, we know as a community that there is no legal requirement for public communication. However, however, because the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, the Board does allow public communication. At its regular meeting, so number two lets us know that there is no legal requirement. But we don't stop there at that part where it says there's no legal requirement. There's another part to section two, when it talks about however, because now it tells us why the Board now is going to allow public communication. So the Board accordingly, um, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regular scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the Board. And the clerk reads that. So at regular board meetings, community are allowed to speak to, uh, the Board members. Now, section nine talks about, because once again, the Board realizes the critical importance of community involvement and want community involvement and engagement and want to hear from the community. So section nine now talks about special meetings. It di- it tells us that at special meetings, public communication is allowed when there's a special meeting and business is going to be held at that special meeting. However, it's now narrowing it in and saying, public, because we value you, because we know that it's critically important for you to be involved, that you can speak at the special meeting when we have an agenda, but you need to speak on the agenda items. You just can't speak on whatever you want like you can in a regular meeting. If there is a special meeting, section nine tell you that if there is a special meeting and, for example, the Board is just calling a special meeting to go into executive session, then there is no agenda, then public, there is no public comment. So that's what section nine says. So I would like to know what, um, are the Board members' interpretation of policy, um, 3220? Because notices are being put out by the Board with special meetings that have an agenda saying that there's no public comment. But that's not what the policy says. That's contradictory to the policy. And I, when Board members, candidates are running, they want to hear from the community. They, they will go to your home, they will go to your church, they'll go to your associations, they'll go wherever, they'll go in the morning, in the evening, afternoon, et cetera, to hear from community. But then there is this appearance that when Board members are elected, that they don't want to hear from the community. They want to be selective as to when they want to hear, when they want to be bothered, when they want to be tolerant, when they want to tolerate the community, and always put in forward, we're not required, there is no legal requirement to have public comment. So basically what you're saying, there is no legal requirement to hear from you. So we will be selective as to when we want to hear from you. Well, that's the good thing about policy, because it goes straight across the Board. Why am I, in the middle of the sentence? That's the good thing about policy, because it goes straight across the Board and it's for everyone. So we really want to know y'all's interpretation and have some public, um, communication for us. Thank you.
That ends our public comments. Reports of the superintendent?
Good evening, Noel.
Good evening.
I just want to congratulate trustee Mitchell and student trustee Anna DeLeon in terms of their admittance to the Board. I also would like to congratulate President Kerwin and Vice President Kelly.
Thank you.
I, I just have two brief items. I wanted to mention that we are trying to be more transparent and we're sharing with the public, um, pretty much what's happening academically. Um, and the purpose of being transparent is to get everyone involved, to help us, because we are going back to basics, and we have a lot of work to do, and we need everyone to help us with that. We want to go back to basics and we want to make learning fun. We want to peel off the layers and get down to brass tactics. We know that we need to improve, and we need everyone to assist us to do so. Our students need us. They need us to help them to learn. We want them to be interested, particularly this summer, in terms of reading. Um, we're going to focus on, like I said, back to basics, reading, arithmetic, and writing. And, um, you know, we're going to do whatever it takes because we have to see improvement. We also, we're focusing on attendance. We're focusing on suspensions. We really have to look at how we suspend students. We want alternative to suspensions because we need students in class. So this is really a call to order, a call, um, champ- I'm asking us to be champions of our students. This is Mount Vernon, and we do not want anything less for our students. They are our future. Recently, we had an administrative retreat, and it was wonderful. And we basically read, we've been reading a book called Good to Great by Jim Sullivan.
Oh, Collins.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Jim Collins. Yes, y'all know the book. I love that book. And I think that, um, the administrators really loved it as well. One of the phrases, and I'll, I'll end here, it states, "The enemy of good," the enemy, wait, "Good is the enemy of great." And so we can't settle for mediocrity. That's one of the key things amongst other things, getting the right people in the bus. But good is the enemy of great. Thank you.
Committee reports.
Can I piggyback on that? I would just like to ask all parents in here, how many of you have sat down and read with your child since the summer, summer programs have started? We have to read with our children, especially our kids, our elementary kids. We have to read with them. It's very important that you put down your book and sit down and read, they put down their toys and sit down to read. Read as a family, just read, because this, it'll bring you closer to your child, and it will help them in school. I was elementary school teacher for 38 years, and I told my parents every year, read every day. Just read a book that your child likes. So please do that just for us, and it'll help every day in school.
Committee reports.
Let's start with... Okay, so we're going to start with trustee Gail. Do you have any committee reports?
Nothing yet.
Okay.
Um, this is the first meeting, I believe, for this new year, school year. I have not been assigned to...
To any committee.
...yet, which will happen. I'd be glad to. And I do want to say, um, because I was sworn in toward the end of the school year, that I did have the opportunity to go to Parker School, Denzel, where the performances at Denzel were great, where my nephew was just like an Alvin Ailey dancer there, and he loves it. And, um, yes, and, um, the honor roll celebration at Parker was phenomenal. So to see our kids in action and the parent parental support is great, and I'm all in for the long haul.
Very well. Thank you. Trustee Helene?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Trustee Sanders?
Um, I had a meeting today with Lisa, I can't pronounce her last name, no, from Scarsdale. Uh-huh. Scarsdale, well, she's, uh, actually, she's a teacher at Scarsdale High School, but now she's a professor at Iona University. And she worked with us, she worked with the high school students last year on the Shark Tank we did. So we were talking about doing another one, and so, um, Dr. Pierce is gone for the day, but, um, Dr. Pierce was on the call, and we are starting to look at, at, uh, trailer at the high school and having, and making some ideas of what we're going to do. We're going to have, uh, three, um, teachers, I think we talked about, the, um, the IB students to come up with something, um, and the entrepreneurial class to come up with something. And, uh, we're going to meet again next week and figure out how we're going to do this. So more to come on that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Lancy.
I have a facilities report. I apologize, I, uh, I was only able to email it to my phone because of a file problem, so I have to read it off my phone, which is particularly small. So, facilities-wise, going over, same thing I said last time, we had purchased 60 air conditioners, which are going to be distributed throughout the district to, uh, keep this, the schools cool over the summer, for the summer schools and for summer school as well as for the staff. The AC repair over at Grimes is still underway. That should conclude soon. The health centers at Hamilton Graham and Ben Turner are ready to start the work to get those underway as well. The repair plan for Graham School Field is, again, underway. The company that actually did the original installation went out of business, so it took time to find the right people to do the work. The cab for Williams School, the cab for the elevator for Williams School, uh, is coming within the next few days, and then it should only take a week to install, but we have to wait until after summer school in order to do that installation, because we can't do the work while the kids are there. Uh, and then lastly, we're just waiting for paperwork to get processed, uh, to remove, remove or, I don't know, know what the right word would be, but to, uh, we have oil tanks in different schools throughout the district. Some will be removed, some will be, uh, decommissioned, remove the oil and fill in with slurry, which is environmentally safe way of handling it without pulling them out of the ground if pulling them out of the ground is, uh, not, I don't want to say cost-effective, but not construction-effective, when if you put a oil tank under the ground and then put a building above it, it's kind of hard to take out the oil tank. That is my facilities report.
Thank you. Trustee White?
No.
Oh, you have something? Oh, okay.
So, um, so I haven't formally selected what committees I'm going to be on. I will be working alongside trustee Lancy on buildings and grounds. I may also be returning to health and wellness regarding, uh, what the children are eating in school and things like that. I want to talk to the, uh, the physicals and the sports initiative for this coming school year, which is, um, something that I myself and several members have been discussing with Coach Semino, trying to ensure that parents are aware of all the sports that our district does offer that so many people have forgotten, um, and trying to bring new sports. So please be on the lookout. I know I've been talking to, uh, district clerk Ms. James. She's been sending out, uh, support and probably robocalls and emails and blasts about, uh, the dates that the children have to have their medicals in, so please take your children and get their medical, get their clearance so that they can be ready to start sports. From my understanding, most of them will be beginning in August. They'll be starting to, uh, call and speak and look for everybody. They'll be submitting their medical forms so that they're ready to start as soon as the school year begins. Sports in schools is incredibly important. Um, if you, you know, and so many of our, our students are aware of it, parents are aware of it. I'm a graduate of this district as well. I remember how much it meant and how important it was when you see your friends in on the baseball team, the football team. We had archery, we had all kinds of things. So, um, I want to make sure that we are aware that that's what's going on. Also, um, you know, we've had all kinds of, uh, challenges that I, that we've been hearing about, you know, as far as, you know, trying to get our back office together. And I heard Mr. Harris come up and speak, and we talked about RFPs and open competitive bidding and things like that. Uh, I think that we need to definitely be sure that we're buttoned up and tied on that. Uh, that question is not the first time it's been heard. So I'm, I'm pretty certain that we're all focused on making sure that that is, we have to close the loop on whatever issues there are. But I also want to speak to the fact that our buildings in our district, yes, we know, you've heard me before, when I sat in these seats before, yes, our buildings are in terrible condition. There's reasons why we can't and haven't been able to make updates and do things, but we're forging ahead and we're trying. There's much more to be done, hoping to look forward. I'm looking forward to working with our facilities person, Mr. Botros, and, uh, you know, the other head custodians and people in our building. And I want to mention something. Those folks in our building, I CSCA and those folks, you heard me get up on the mic and talk in the public about how important they are. Everything about what they do is important, including them getting paid on time and being paid correctly. So better believe we're going to open up that can and we're going to get things together because it can't just continue. So you're going to hear from me almost every meeting, I'm going to run my mouth, all right?
Thank you. Trustee White?
I'm just asking the question, Mr. Botros, are, are buildings ready to take in the summer program? Are all the air conditioners fully in place for the summer programs that will start on Monday? I know, um, Grimes doesn't have them right now. Hopefully it'll be fixed by Monday, or we'll have to transfer those kids someplace.
So, uh, we have a consultant, Mike Ragusa, who has been working on the air conditioning initiative. He was briefing, uh, some folks today. Uh, I believe they're almost all in. Whether they're going to be in by Monday, I, I'm not sure. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for that. Um, but we're almost there, and it's imminent.
It's 90 degrees, and these kids can't sit in some classroom.
So I'm not going to say they're not going to be installed by Monday. I'm sorry, I just don't have an answer for you. I'll have to get back.
Mr. Silver, would you have an answer?
We anticipate that all the air conditions, uh, window air conditions that need to be installed will be installed as part of school.
Okay. So that's a yes. Okay, so that's a yes.
We anticipate that all the air conditioners, between 16 and 70 units, the electrical work has been finished and we anticipate that they will be installed and working by the start of school. You had asked the question about Grimes and we know it's partially down. We did discuss that earlier tonight, but we expect that to be finished or at least partially operating right away.
So are the windows, are those air con, window air conditioners? And are our electrical sockets able to...
They are window air conditioners and one of the problems that we've had in the past is that air conditions have been put in the rooms in the place where people wanted the air conditioner to be and run electrical extension cords, which are illegal. And so we are now running wire mold with new sockets on the walls right where the air conditioner needs to be. So no, no extension cords are needed. That was what had to be done as well as upgrading. Not really upgrading, but we had to install some electrical outlets in order to accommodate the window units. And yes, they're window units. And most of the windows, or many of the windows, are not double hung windows, meaning they go up and down. And so in the windows where the air conditioners go and windows that are not that way, we have to put like wooden or panels of some sort to fill up the rest of the space. And those will come out when we don't need them anymore and will be repurposed in other buildings.
Was a report shared with Mr. Botros?
I don't know that there was a report on this. We've just been, we've just been working.
It was reported during the facilities and grounds meeting that we had. Mr. Ragusa reported on this as to the, you know...
I don't know what he reported to Mr. Botros.
No, no. It was the facilities and grounds meeting that we had. No? You don't remember that Mr. Ragusa brought us up to date on this?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So I have a question. Why is the facility director is not included in your facility meetings?
I was. I was at the meeting.
You were?
When Mike Ragusa spoke about the ACs.
That isn't my question.
So Ken has been helping. You know, this year we have been addressing a lot of facilities issues. We have made great strides this year to bring our buildings up to code. It took a lot of money. I'm sorry it's not visible to the students and to the community, but firearms aren't visible to the community, but we need them to work. Ken really has been, it's been a shared job. Ken, bringing in the consultants and myself. It's been a little challenging to brief each other. Mike Ragusa has been doing a great job. He briefs, he oftentimes briefs Ken directly on some initiatives that they've worked on together. I'm sorry about not knowing about the air conditioning.
You don't have to apologize. I'm just saying that we need to be, when we talk about transparency, I'm just hoping that we keep a report so that we don't have to repeat what is known by...
Fair enough.
Should be known by all. That's all.
But Mike and Ken, I know, Mike Ragusa has been very trustworthy and on time in meeting his deadlines. And I just, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't want to give you an incomplete answer or an incorrect answer. I knew he was on target and almost there. Ken just telling us that he's there.
One more point is that William's electrical work itself will be done tomorrow. All buildings will have the air conditioners operating on Monday.
Thank you, Ken.
So the answer to Trustee White is that yes. It will be ready for summer school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
First, how long have the air conditioners been in our possession?
Not long. We received them recently.
That's not a day. A few weeks?
Yes.
A few weeks. Okay. And my other question is, I got to ask Mr. Botros, how can you not know what the status is and tell us that I can't give you an answer? I'm not certain.
It's easy. There's a lot going on in the district.
Well, where's Mr. Ragusa?
I spent four hours today.
He's not here?
Yeah.
I see. Okay. So would he would know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And does he answer to you directly?
He answers to Ken and myself.
See, that's a yes.
Yes.
Does answer to you. Okay. I just, of course, it would be from the outside. It would look a little strange that you being a director and not have some of that basic information. That's all. That's fine.
It's explainable, but...
Yeah, I see. I was looking for the explanation today.
So we have numerous supervisory positions that are missing, you know, head custodians, custodians.
That's fine. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'd like to share.
Okay. So Trustee White, do you have anything else? Trustee White?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
So, extension of the facilities report. We had discussed the model apartment for the life skills students. I wanted to know where we're at with putting that in Mount Vernon High School. I was told that the electrical and the plumbing had to be done.
Ken, we spoke about that today.
Okay, good.
Sabina, Sabina?
So the room we're speaking of at Mount Vernon High School that Dr. Pierce wanted to change into an apartment for, for life skills. This is kind of similar to some of the life skills rooms that we've had in the past in various buildings. So this was the architect's office. It's a big office. It has some plumbing in it. Needs some plumbing work to put in things like washing machines, dishwashers, things that for life skills we would want students to learn how to use. Simple things that we think of every day but are important for them to know. So there is some electrical work. This room also has its own outside door. It can, it has a great floor. The lighting is terrific. It will not be a big lift to get this done. We just have to be directed that this is, that this is supposed to happen and we can make it happen over the summer and be ready for the fall.
Okay, and so the washing machines and dryers that are brand new, where will they be placed? Because I heard you mention dishwasher. The ones that were donated that are taking up...
Well, I'm thinking of home where I have a dishwasher. So I don't know if they plan on a dishwasher.
I'm really talking about the fact that the laundry center that would be available to these students and also to the rest of the community at Mount Vernon High School, are those going to be put in anytime soon?
So those machines were purchased, I believe, to be used for some of the sports programs in the locker rooms.
Were they donated or purchased?
Donated.
Donated.
Okay. So they were just, they were never opened, never used and those will be repurposed or purposed into those rooms, yes. There's also some kitchen type of equipment in the, in the room that we're using at Benjamin Turner for the health center. And that equipment may be able to be moved because it's a, it's a full kitchen in some of those rooms. So that may be able to be used. But we'll, some plumbing will have to be done, but the basic plumbing is there for that room.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I have one more question for facilities? What's the status of the Grimes demolition?
We met today with the vendor. I forget the name of the vendor, but the engineers and the architects met for a final meeting with the, with the vendor who was $699,000. I'm hoping, I was planning to write to you about this tomorrow. I'm hoping to get this on the agenda for the 18th so we can get going on this as fast as possible. This $699,000 was well below what we thought. Remember, all this money is coming out of the bond. And so that gives us at least, I think, $300,000 or $400,000 that will be freed up from the bond for this purpose. So I just got a report from the engineers that they're recommending go ahead. There's several alternates that are part of it, bringing it to $723,000, which includes seeding, sodding, putting in some trees. Remember, this space adjoins the playground at Grimes. The playground at Grimes is an inferior playground in terms of the size, scope of it, and that space is right there. But there was no plan to do anything beyond taking down the, that building. In order to make anything of that property, we would have to raise up the front of the property with a retaining wall to level out the property and then it could be repurposed to a field. So I'm probably going to recommend we don't plant trees right now, but that we consider what we want to do and perhaps have some landscape company come in and suggest how it will be done. But the, the big work, the expense in that property will be putting in the retaining wall to be able to have it be flat rather than be sloping down to the street.
Thank you. So as far as the budget, I have the budget committee report. So the budget committee met with the comptroller, Dr. Morton, last week. I know the school district and his office started off on the wrong foot. So we were able to patch everything out. It was a great productive meeting with Dr. Morton, I must say. We are working on building our relationship, building that gap that we have and soften the tone, right? So, because we all served, the city and the school district serve the same taxpayers. So we are softening the tone. We are working together. We're actually building a relationship with the comptroller's office. So last week when we met, the committee met with Dr. Morton. He had promised us to send $2 million out of, as you know, the city owes the school district 11.7. So he sent $2 million in last week. Well, when I say he, I mean the city, his office, sent $2 million into the school district out of the 11.7 million. So that remains, what, $9 million, 9.7? And he also promised to speak with the mayor and the council members to perhaps give us another, like 1.5 million by July. So all fingers crossed and we are, you know, holding him to his word, which he says that he will be working on that. Also, to pay off that debt, what they're also doing, what he proposed and what we accepted, because any money is better than none, is that he proposed to pay, to do a partial payment or monthly payment, installments, rather, payment. We have not come to an agreement to the amount, right? I remember we had said $750,000, but it's, we won't know the exact amount until he meets with his governing body. Right, Mr. Silver? Do you have, okay, all right. Trustee Gail, is that just about right? Okay. So yes, so we're working on that relationship and we are going in the right direction. So I'm proud of that. And the committee was all happy to meet with Dr. Morton. And we look forward to meeting with him in July and going forward so we could build a working relationship. Now, as far as the new budget, the budget for 2023, 2024 school year is up and running. That is in order. All the orders that comes into the business office have been filled fast and furious, according to Mr. Silver. Also, money that was in the old budget that covered, that would have covered purchasing and any other materials or anything from the old budget is not going to be used. If it hasn't been spent, it's not going to be used. What we're going to do, Mr. Silver's office, is move it over to the fund balance into the new budget. So there is no new, old purchase orders that were never filled. It's too late. Everything is now going to be moved over to the new budget. Mr. Silver, do you want to extend on that?
You have all of it. Very good.
To the fund balance?
Yes, so now we get all that money going to be moved over, transferred. I'm pretty sure Mr. Silver is going to bring forward the transfer soon, maybe the next meeting. So we transfer the money onto, into the fund balance for all unused money out of the last budget. Yes? Okay.
Can I ask one question on that?
Sure.
So we actualized 2022, 2023 expenditures. We actualized so that we identified savings. Is there a report that all of us conceded shows where we saved?
We don't have that yet.
Okay.
Because it's coming to a close now, right? So before the new school year starts, going to ask Mr. Silver to put that together so that we could share it with the public and with the trustees.
That's great. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great. All right, that concludes the budget report. Thank you. That's it. And that's it for...
Any old business?
Yeah.
Since we are, are working with the city, we were approved to be on the IDA after so many years, right, Tom? And the first meeting that the school district's going to sit on is next week, the 14th. The 13th? The 13th. Next week. Because she told me the 12th now and 4th. Okay. So yeah, so we won't have a voting. We don't, we're not there yet, but we're actually getting along, so that's a good thing.
It's a non-voting...
A non-voting seat, but a seat, but a seat anyway.
Trustee Sanders will be occupying that seat.
I'll occupy that seat for a minute.
So you could be representing the district?
I'm going to represent the school district.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I wanted to discuss the permits for use of the school grounds that we are putting up signage so that community members can register with the Board of Education to use it and that we will be enforcing the permits and usage of the grounds. So that's something in the works that the public should be aware of. Thank you.
Can we go to our resolutions? Resolutions? Cave of motion for 5.1, Human Resources 85A certified.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Cave of motion for 5.2, Human Resources Resolution 85B.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? For the 2023, 2024 school year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yeah, just curious, Mr. Silver, just, it's a lot of money, what did they do exactly?
So, this $151,000 is the same number as we have had with the Spain agency, which is Brown &amp; Brown, our major insurance broker, it's the same thing. It's the same dollar figure that we have paid through all of these years. And before explaining further, I would tell you that our premiums have gone down, our accidents have gone down, our workers' comp cases have gone down as a result of our representative, who is with us in the office three days a week and then she works for us one other day a week from her mail pack office. She goes out to the schools and provides safety training to them. And we have just been advised that we are getting a $198,000 refund of our premium that we paid last year as a result of having a really much better record. So, she takes care of every workers' comp case that happens. She works with somebody else in the business office who gets the report from the school when there's an injury. She then reports it, but she determines whether it has to be, how it has to be reported, whether it's reported as something they put a reserve on or whether they know there's going to be a lawsuit. And it goes, they work directly with Ingram and Smith, our attorneys, who also manage all of our insurance claims. So, they work very closely together and this person has been a partner. A number of you have met her, actually, when we've had some of our insurance meetings. She's an integral part of the office and of keeping our employees safe.
Any other questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 9.7, Authorization to Renew the Agreement with Brown &amp; Brown to Serve as a Retail Agent for Insurance Coverage for the 2023, 2024 School Year.
Motion.
Who was second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 9.8, Authorization to Pay Other School Districts for Health and Related Services for the 2024, 2023 School Year.
Motion.
Second, question.
Okay, questions, concerns, discussions?
Can you explain exactly what this is? Does this have to do with charter schools also? What is this?
Mr. Silver?
We are required to provide health services for children who go to private and parochial schools or to other school districts or BOCs. There is a state formula based on what that school district spends for all of the children in the school district and we then have to pay that formula. It usually goes between $1,200 and $1,500 per child for the school year who attend these other schools, or it could be OLV or any of those programs. And that is also figured by the same person in our office who takes the insurance claims and has been doing that for years. Each one of those is done by formula, I have to sign off on it and we pay them typically once a year for those students. We have to verify that those students are our kids before we pay those numbers. And nobody asked, but I'll just tell you that there's one other aspect that we have as responsibility to other schools, is that we have to pay textbooks for children who attend private and parochial schools. And there's a dollar figure, my office directly handles all of those textbook orders, that's our only obligation to private and parochial schools, the health services provided and textbooks.
The other question I have is, just so I'm understanding, this says the budget balance here is 775, but we're not to pay to exceed $600,000. So, am I understanding that the amount we're actually paying is not attached to this resolution right here?
That's correct.
When will we have that amount?
Well, I already have the amount that we've spent for the current year, because the current year is finished. Well, I'm not sure we've paid all the bills from the current year, we'll have that shortly as President Kerwin said, when we have the report on the entire budget for the year that just passed.
So, we're kind of giving you the green light to just pay without having the right amount in front of us?
We have no choice on this, it's required by law to pay these funds based on the state formula for these children.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Cave a motion for 9.9, Authorization for Placement of Coverage for the 2023, 2024 Physical Year with Affleck New York to Provide Extended Health Coverage. Need a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 9.10, Authorization to Continue Contract with KG&amp;D Architects to Serve as District Architects for the 2023, 2024 Physical Year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
There's no lawsuit with them, right? I'm asking. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 9.11, Authorization to Accept Proposal from AML Security Group to Provide a Director of Security and Assistant Director of Security.
Motion.
Need a second? I need a second?
Second?
Okay.
And question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, just so I'm understanding, we're using this company to help us find a Director of Secu, I'm sorry, a Director of Security and an Assistant Director of Security. And who, and I'm sorry, what is our current, don't we have a current Director of Security? I'm sorry, don't we have, is Mr. Fagan still with us or no?
Okay, so, Mr. Fagan is hired through a company that we paid almost a million dollars plus for.
Briga last year, right?
Briga.
So, he's remaining in place?
Right now, we have RFP, a company that hopefully he'll be hired through, he's a part, it is hope that he's going to be one of the people hired through the company.
So, he could actually pick up one of these two titles, yes?
He could.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding, we don't want a top-heavy administration, we've been there before, right? You know, a long time ago. I'm just, we're going to have three, are we not going to have, we're not going to have three people that are like Director, Assistant Director, something like Director, we're not going to have that, we're just going to have two people.
We're going to have a Director, Assistant Director, and a Supervisor.
Okay, so that's, now I'm going to just say this, that sounds like a lot of money and do we have enough security guards in our buildings and are we paying our security guards?
We're also hiring 17 security guards.
17 more?
Security guard, yes.
Permanent or per diem?
Permanent.
Permanent?
Yes.
Did we look at our per diems first to make sure before we said we're going to start hiring, are we going to do that?
We will definitely do that.
Definitely?
Sure.
Can I ask one question, last one, I'm going to just shut up at that. What is the process for a per diem security guard to be flipped to full or permanent if they wanted? What is the process? Who gives the green light on that?
They have to go through the hiring process.
So, they have to go through Human Resources, apply for the position? Okay, there's no, they don't have to go to building leads and all of this type of stuff and get a green light from that person, somebody, nothing like that?
You said building leads.
In other words, like their principals and things like that? Because I remember hearing that that's how it went, is that not the case?
They have to apply for the job when there's a vacancy and be interviewed for it to get the job.
Okay, so their input from their principal doesn't impact that decision, yes or no?
Well, if you had an individual that had poor evaluations, that would be taken into consideration, of course.
Okay, so that means the principal has say even over the security director who's these people are reporting to?
In our district, we have to look at the people in which we hire. If you got, if you were absent 50 times, if you were having difficulties, that has, that impacts your ability to be hired.
I believe that. That wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't the question, but okay, I'm fine.
Well, you.
My question is, who is the person's in control of making sure that people who are, just take it back, per diems? We have guards in the district, I believe, that are still per diems, some of which may be wanting to go perm. They should be first come, first served before we start hiring outside. My question is, who has the input and deciding factor to have those people be awarded those full-time permanent positions?
Let me just begin with, we're trying to hire from within, that's our top priority, always. So, if we have people that can do the job that's currently in the job, we want them.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, and again, in the term, it still comes back to the whole thing with the Director and Assistant Director. If they're reporting to these people, then those should be the people that should be making the decisions, I'm not certain. They should be getting the word from the principal about attendance records and things like that, but the Directors?
I just want you to understand, and basically, a decision was made to have the building principals at least have input, because those individuals work in their building. So, there should be a collaboration between the Director or the Supervisor and the principal, because it's the principal's building, ultimately, we hold the principals to task.
Okay.
So, they have to have some input.
Input, yes, final decisions, no, right?
Well, it's input, so when you say final decision, they're part of it, so they're part of the final decision to do.
So, my understanding is that this has to go through compact, this has to go to HR, it's the process, it's the same process?
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to get an answer for, right?
Yeah, so it's the compact, HR, this building principal, we're going to have a compact team, right, they're going to have a compact team. The employee would then come out from that compact team, correct? Yes.
Yes, if I neglected to say that, I started, I said, I said it's a hiring process, so the process includes a compact, but if you worked internally in the district, communication should happen with the compact.
I understand.
Or maybe they won't get to that point, depending on what has happened previously.
Okay, and the last thing I have is, so these Director and Assistant Director, they report to you correctly, correct?
They report to Dr. Jones.
Dr. Jones. So, Dr. Jones, okay, she's not here today. I'll ask her the question, because we need to make sure that our Directors of Security are treating our people, right? And we should have an ear to all of our guards who are telling us that they're being mistreated or anything else, otherwise, their voices are just as loud as anyone else here. So, I hope that these folks that we bring in, they'll understand, we will be listening to our guards. I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
So, can I just ask this question, is it absolutely positively necessary, because I've not seen it in the past, to have a Director, Assistant Director, and Supervisor of Security? Is that what we're saying?
Basically, Briga, through Briga, we had a Director and two Supervisors, that's what we had.
But was that really necessary in terms of the monies and, because we've never had it before, so I'm just asking.
I don't know, let me just remind you, if you recall, we had some difficulties at Mount Vernon High School last year, a whole lot of difficulties. And Briga, when they came in, were their security folks, a lot of that subsided.
Because of them?
No, not solely, we had a very good administration there.
They had great security, right, that was a lot, I was there.
Okay, so, Briga was assigned there, so we had great, we had great security, but the new Mount Vernon High School improved immensely.
Well, she's there too.
Okay, and I'm saying poorly in pairs, so you're asking if it was necessary, it really was.
No, I mean, is it necessary now that we do have, continue to have it, the three instead of one?
It is, Mount Vernon is a big district that has some difficulties and if you, let me just say that the Director of Security was very helpful in terms of police involvement and in terms of many things that occurred in our building.
So, they will be serving the whole district, right, not just designated to Mount Vernon High? So, the entire district?
They service the entire district.
The entire district. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 9.12, Authorization to Accept a Donation of $569.86 from the Heinz Institute for Entrepreneurship and Innovation at Iona University.
Motion.
Second.
Who was second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have an authorization for 9.13, Authorizing Agreement with Aramark Food Service Management for the 2023, 2024 School Year?
Motion.
Second.
Can we get?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I got some.
Are we guaranteeing a better food service quality? Because we had Aramark at one time. Now, we have them back, so I hope to see a big improvement.
Well, we're hoping for that improvement. Aramark was pretty impressive, only Aramark and Whitson's did bid on this and Aramark was the low bidder by a quarter of a million dollars, but that was not the reason. We felt that Aramark had the ability to move forward and that they have moved forward through the years, so we are very hopeful. And we also have plans in the works to have better oversight over the entire program, but we're not ready for that yet, but it's coming soon.
Hot meals? Breakfast and lunch?
We can't have, we can't have hot breakfast in the classroom. Well, there's been some discussion about that, but that has to be another discussion where that's going to be. But it's, Aramark is saying that they can have warm food in the classroom.
Warm, okay.
Warm. And that, just because the milk is cold, it doesn't have to have the warm food in the same box with the, with the cold milk, so we're hoping for that improvement right away and as to where the food will be served, that's a separate matter.
All right, so I have a question, this is, this is the company, this is the company that's taken over for the last company we had, we had Whitson, right? This is the company taking over for Whitson?
Yes, we've had Whitson for five years.
Right. Now, my question is, as far as hierarchy goes, as far as who's over what, who, how does the chain of command go when Aramark is here? Is it, is it district employees recording to Aramark or is it vice versa? How is it supposed to go?
Well, part of that is what Dr. Smith and I are working on, which is to have a better district-level person responsible for overseeing the entire food program, as we used to have a Director until three years ago. But we are, we're just not ready on that, hopefully we'll be ready at the next board meeting. But in terms of the hierarchy, Aramark has now hired all of Whitson's employees who wanted to work for Aramark. That, we're talking about the people preparing the food and serving the food. This has nothing to do with the lunch monitors who work in the cafeterias and who are our employees. There are also our employees in many of the schools, not all the schools. When there's, somebody leaves, we replace it with our own employee, if that's possible. In terms of who's in charge, the, there is a, well, there's a Director from Aramark who will be here, that will not be the person who is from Whitson's whom you know. We are hoping to possibly have the person from Whitson's come.
Motion carries. Cave a motion for 6.1, Approval to Add Girls' Varsity Flag Football and Boys' Varsity Football.
Motion.
Second.
Who's second? That was, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Accept the Teacher Center of Central Westchester NYSED Grant for the 2023, 2024 School Year?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Approve Additional Staff for the 2023 Summer School Programs?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
This, I just have, this, I'm looking at one of these, is this, is this a TA or is that a teacher? Is that, I thought she was a teacher. Okay, okay.
I have a question. I'm sorry, some of the administrators on the list are no, are not going to, not going to be, are they going to be here? Some of those, have we, in the last meeting, we resolved, we were accepted, certain things, are we going to still have those, they're still on here now? How does that work? The administrators for this particular resolution?
Dr. Gaberton?
Trustee Mitchell has a question.
About the summer school?
Um, yes, 7.2.
Yes, so, I noticed their names on the, on the list that are administrators who I know that we've recently, I believe, separated with, and I'm just trying to make sure why they're still there.
So, I believe all our administrators in our building, the separation date is August, so they're still working for us until their separation date.
Okay.
We are one of the school district who enforce the 30-day rules.
Okay, so this, the timeframe that's being covered will not exceed that date that they're supposed to stop or come short, right? Okay, thank you.
All right, we're, 7.2, we're actually going to need to pull. Okay.
How do you do? So, we have, Tom, hi. So, Tom is the school district attorney representing us tonight. So, if we just want to modify just one name, how do we do that? Because it's a list and we don't want to affect everyone or delay everyone, we just want to change, I think it's the title of one employee that we would like to change, that's incorrect on the, on the form here.
So, what you need to do is make a motion to amend the resolution, you'd have to vote on the motion to amend, and then you'd have to vote to approve the amended resolution.
Tonight?
You could do that tonight, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so everyone? Is there a motion on the floor?
Second.
He just did it.
So, prior to that?
Yeah, there wasn't.
You have to tell everybody what the amendment is, how you're amending the resolution.
Okay, so, cave a motion.
Cave a motion to amend 7.2 title change for an employee.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Cave a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Approve a Can I have a motion for 7.2, authorization to approve additional staff for the 2023 summer school programs with the amendment?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.3, authorization to approve additional summer work for Director of Technology? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
So if you could just pause?
Which one?
Dr. Smith has an announcement. If you could just pause a minute?
Yes, I just wanted to pause and acknowledge that Dr. Melissa White will be, is the new principal of Pennington School. And Ms. Barbara Abbey is the new principal of Mandela. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Can I have a motion for 7.4, authorization to pay stipend to Mount Vernon Steam Academy teachers to establish summer esports pilot program?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, authorization to hire for college summers, college and career enrichment program?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Who was second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.2, approval of Student Services Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number One, dated July 6, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Um, just so I'm understanding, these are, these are the amounts that we have to pay out to the different schools that are charter?
No. So these are our contracts. Our lawyers send the contract to our various services. So that also includes students that we are being served at some charter schools that are, that are classified. Yes, it is the amount. However, in some cases, we may not have the programming for them, so we do have to venture out. Also attached with all the contracts that we approve, that we review by our lawyers before we put them in.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.3, authorization for summer work for Tiana Hawkins, Special Education Instructional Coach? Need a motion?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we get some background on this, please?
So this coach is going to be working with our ESY program at Rebecca Turner to provide our students one cohort with specific instruction. We are, another way, we're using this is to try to capture some of our kids who miss certain things during the school year. So that is one way of us doing it to our summer program.
So this is just at that one school?
We only have that program at Rebecca Turner right now.
Okay, and is it, you said one cohort?
It's a cohort.
Is that from what grade, what grade, or is it just the year?
It's the year.
Just one year?
Yes.
Okay, so for the first to the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. How do we arrive at Ms. Hawkins being the best person to do this job?
So there was a posting put out. We went to a compact. And she applied. Ms. Carew, Director of Special Education Service, had a compact with supervisors involved, special education teachers, general education teachers as well.
And we have all the signed compact?
Yes, sir. I am a little bit of a stickler for those things.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that rumor that you're a stickler?
Oh, no, it's a non-fact.
It's a fact. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.4, authorization for pupil personnel staff for work, to work overtime for summer central registration, 2023-2024?
Motion.
Can I just say something? We have two late nights that parents will be able to come in and do registration, Monday and Thursday. I will be putting out an advertisement on the school website.
Can you also do a rubber, rubber call?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Which is the purpose of why we, I ask for the overtime. I will also be having those plac everywhere that you saw. We will be heavily advertising that we in the Mount Vernon City School District recognize that parent cannot come during the day. So they will be able to come two evenings.
What time?
It will be from, registration will begin from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Monday and Thursday?
Monday and Thursday.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.5, authorization to accept a donation of wooden puddin', putt, puddin', puddin' green workshop kits from Home Depot in Yonkers, New York?
Motion.
Second.
So our students will be building a garden, and Home Depot has kindly donated all the equipment needed to build that garden, including creating wooden boxes for the plants. I'm not, no, I have a green thumb, but our students will be working on that this summer, and they're kindly all donating all the equipment that those kids will need in order to do that.
What buildings?
Yes.
What buildings will they be putting in the garden?
Rebecca Turner is where the program is at.
Rebecca Turner is on, I'm telling you.
Always happy while you're gone, huh? Doing things, huh?
Did the dog influence you in this?
No. The teacher who's working in the program live in that neighborhood and is in that area. So it was just a natural for it to be in that area. Also, again, our ESY program, one of the things we want to do is not just have our students do things in the classroom, bring them out to nature, have them grow things. Also, I'll just remind everyone, Mount Vernon is about creating our own food source because we are a food desert, so that is also another part of it.
So are you interested in bees?
Yes, I love honey.
I have, I have somebody I have a contact.
Okay, let's talk after.
Any other concerns, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, appoint staff for the 2023 summer food service program?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I have a question. When you look, the backup shows rates. Are we certain that the rates that are shown, and I know this is a Ken Silver question, he's looking off to the side because, you know, are we 130% certain that the rates are accurate according to people's start dates? So there's, so we could be beyond reproach or question? In other words, meaning the rates are there, right? The rates would be, would coincide with when those folks' start dates were, right?
The rates would coincide with where they are on the salary schedule.
Okay, and this, and the rates where they are?
Not necessarily related to their start date, but how, where they are on the salary schedule. And yes.
So it's accurate?
Certain they will be accurate.
Thank you.
So I guess one way to verify that is with HR, right? So we will be marrying both departments, correct? In the future, like tomorrow?
Goodie. I was gonna say, right now.
Right now, yes. We have to marry the two because without HR, there won't be no business office and vice versa. HR is the gateway into the school district, so we have to marry both department. So we?
We're already dating.
You're already dating, okay. So we eliminate all the deficiencies that's, you know, flying around. Thank you.
No pressure, Mr. Campbell.
Any more questions or concerns from this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have an authorization for 9.2, authorization of Oral County Bus Company for summer transportation?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.3, approval of medical staff for summer 2023 sports physicals?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
All right, so this is, this is basically to pay the staff to make sure that, remember we were talking earlier about the sports clinics and making sure the kids are getting their medical forms, getting cleared? The people on this resolution are going to be the ones putting in the hours to make sure that they're available to get those forms completed and get our kids cleared for sports, in case anybody was wondering.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.4, authorization to hire in bioscience to support facilities?
Second.
I said second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Is that the company that we use with Ragusa?
Yes.
Okay, so he will be staying on? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have an authorization, can I have a motion for 9.5, authorize Seneca Consultant, Inc. for administrative and financial consultation services in connection with the Affordable Care Act for the 2023-2024 fiscal year? Need, we need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
We pay about $10,000 a year for the service that Seneca provides. There are, there are requirements under the Affordable Care Act that we have to measure and verify that people are insured under the law. People, people that are connected to us cannot have no insurance. And their responsibility is to make sure that we, we fulfill all the responsibilities to the federal government and the state having to do with people being insured properly.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.6, authorization to continue agreement with the Spain Agency to provide workers' compensation services to the district?
To work for us, to be running the entire food program for the district. So we are talking with that. I've discussed that with the superintendent, but we're just not ready yet. But we're hopeful that we'll be able to do that. That money is budgeted. And remember, all of the food service is, is, is a cafeteria budget, and the summer food service is through, that's federal funds for the summer food service.
Who's going to control the quality of what the consistency?
I think that's our responsibility to be more proactive. The Wellness Committee has kind of disintegrated through the past few years. Remember, we used to have, Wanda, we used to have meetings every couple of weeks with the people from Whitson's, and that kind of went away. And I think we need to do a better job than we can. And this will be a new start, and I'm hopeful it'll be better.
Form a Wellness Committee, perhaps?
It exists, but there's nobody on it.
Nobody on it. Right, so that's why we need to form one. Okay.
Do you have anyone who are chefs or anything on that?
We, we have not. But I know somebody who maybe could help us.
Maybe so.
Maybe so. I'll speak to him myself. Yeah, excuse me, I hear somebody saying, could we involve students? We have involved students in the past, and certainly we would want all parties to be involved. We want the teaching staff, the administration, and students, as well as, as well as perhaps a chef, yes.
I'd suggest that we use the culinary students because this is part of their training, you know? So that would make better sense to have culinary students?
And they're right there.
They're right there at the high school.
All three high schools, yes. Yes, yes, all three, yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries, please. Can I have a motion for 10.1, authorize an amendment to an employment agreement between Mount Vernon City School District and Andrews Williams, effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024?
Second.
Question?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Okay, so I asked this question from the public last time. I don't see a title for this person on this document, and I don't understand how I'm going to be expected to approve this resolution to pay this person X amount of, let me see something here. I'm sorry, yes. $76,500 to pay somebody to do, make clouts? I don't see a title on the document, so I have a difficult time voting in favor of this. That's just me. I don't understand why we don't have titles. Last meeting, $613,000 worth of contracts was resolved and approved on. Not one title was on any document. So folks are getting paid to come and work for us for X amount of time. There's a dollar amount attached, everybody signed it, not one title. Huh? It may be, it may be a practice that we just don't do it, but that's a practice that we need to change. I won't vote for it, put it that way. I will not. I'm not going to say it's okay to pay somebody $76,500 so that they can go and find buttons.
Okay, so this individual is the executive assistant to myself. So, let's begin there. Let's begin that she's been working, that I'm currently working.
You said the title?
Oh, okay.
That's all they need, is a title. There should be a title on a document. That's it. That's all I'm saying. If there's no title, you won't get anything out of me like a yes. Sorry. Regardless of the practice or historical failure, we need to start making it transparent because these documentations, these docs are on board docs. So all our folks in the public who actually watch and read board docs in advance of the meeting, they have these questions, and sometimes they can't make it here, and they want to know why. What, where is that?
These amendments, so these amendment to, to contracts that exist. But we could have, we could add something to them, but it's really amendments, so it's not the full contract, it's just an update.
But you're saying we could add something?
We could, if it, we could put the title for.
Bless you, bless you. Thank you.
Any more questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.2, authorization to extend the contract with Lilian Sorent Morales as acting principal of Mount Vernon Steam Academy?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.3, authorize an employment agreement with Noel Campbell as?
Motion.
As Associate Superintendent for Human Resources.
Second.
Can I have that again?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Question?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
It's gonna be really fast. Who is taking over? Mr., all right, so Mr. Campbell has been amazing, let me just say that. Our students can attest to that. Our, our teachers and our building leaders can attest to that, have been in contact with him. I don't know how we're gonna fill that shoe. It's gonna be somebody had to cut a new pair of shoes, but are we going to replace him somehow?
Yeah.
In time for the school year that's coming? Is that the plan?
That is the plan. I don't know, like you said, if we can, but that is the plan.
Thank you.
This is my question. Since he's in charge of that, it should be a must. We are counting on him to bring the same quality that he leaves behind. We have a certain standard we're expecting. Thank you.
Like, we need the human back into human resources, please. Thank you. Like, we need the human back into human resources, please. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Noel Kim.
Congratulations, district.
Trustee's that asked you to come up.
Take it, take it.
Take the big seat, they said.
Imagine, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion for 11 point one? Authorization to revise policies number 3430, Uniform Violent and Disruptive Incident System, number 5661 Wellness, number 5683 Fire Drills, Bomb Threat, Bus Emergency Drills, and number 7530 Child Abuse and Maltreatment.
So all that together, what is it? I just want to get the whole collaboration, all of that.
Hi! I, I need a motion, motion in the floor, please.
Motion, motion. All right.
So all these three policies, the last time they were updated was in 2006. And we've made, brought them to the 21st century.
Yes.
Okay.
The first one is the school safety and educational climate. The old Vader name has been changed to S E C, where it combines suspension and the D A S A report. So that's 3430. Fifty-six eighty-three is a fire drill, bomb threat and business, um, bus emergency drill. I revised that policy and I will be reading the first regulations to that policy in a few minutes. We also update our child abuse policy to include also a regulation. On the last time this policy was updated was in 2011. It is very clear who is a mandated reporter and the latter of refer after they report. Also attached to this policy are the documents that are required to be filled out by administrators or anyone else reporting. A new part of this policy is also a regulation that state who, when, how reports should be made and what will happen if a staff member was mandated to report does not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Have a motion for 11 point two. First reading of policy number 5662, change for school meals and number 7530 R, child abuse and maltreatment regulations.
So our wellness policy, we updated. And it's a wonderful thing that there will be a wellness committee because the names will now be required to be put on the website who's part of that committee. A co-policy, all our students in the Mount Vernon City School District receive free breakfast, lunch. Our students, if they want to go back for second, third lunch, have the ability to do so. However, we want to ensure that the children eat the first lunch. The way we are charged is, there's a click, it clicks how many times the students, how many number of students we have. We, the district, pay for a second lunch. So this policy explained that no staff is to deny children food. So for the first reading, basically the policy says that the Board of Education provide the opportunity for all students to access nutritional meals. The community eligible provision in which the district has been approved to participate and allow for all student attention to receive one reimbursable breakfast and one reimbursable lunch at no charge each day school is in session. This program ensures that students do not go hungry, eliminate the need for students to pay for meal as well as the need to charge for meal. Alacott items, side dishes, snacks and extra meal available to students to purchase must be paid at the point of service. To comply with federal and state regulations, students are not permitted to charge these items, occur at balance or make arrangements to pay at a later time because all meals are free. So this policy is necessary to prevent anyone from denying children in the city school district a free meal. The accompanying regulation for the child abuse and maltreatment states. We provide a definition, according to state law, what is child abuse? It says, according to social service law in the Family Court Act, it is a child less than 18 years of age whose parent or other person legally responsible for his or her care inflict or allowed and inflicted upon such child physical injury or other accidental. The important part of this regulations, it details what is supposed to happen in the building. If either teacher Marie Garbiton Swift, report, a student report to me that they have been abused, I am mandated by law to report it. This regulation tells them, after they've reported, complete the appropriate form, they are also to inform their building principals. At the end of the year, building principals will submit a report to people personnel services. This regulation is enforceable because it outlines all the procedures that must take place for each and every member of the Mount Vernon City School District. And that's it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11 point three. Authorization to waive the second reading for policy number 5662, change for school meals and number 7530 R, child abuse and maltreatment regulations and immediately adopt. Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries.
I will be back at the next meeting with 27 more policies.
Yay!
Thank you. We're really working hard on the policy committee, right?
So we're, we're gonna go back to seven point two and we're gonna do, we were able to fix this problem. So we're gonna go back, I mean, ask for a motion to amend what we just voted on. And then we're gonna do, we're gonna go back and vote on it as it, as it was. Okay, so can I have a motion for seven point two? Um, authorization to approve additional staff for the 2023 summer school program as we voted the last time? A motion?
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion again then for seven point two? As it was, okay, authorization to approve additional staff for the 2023 summer school program.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So it would remain?
It will remain as is, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have the question already?
Questions, concerns, discussions, yes.
What is the change between now and before? We can't announce it? We can't announce why?
We, clarification.
Yeah, clarification.
Yeah, we just need, we needed to clarify something.
They verified certification.
We needed. Okay, yes. Certification.
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 Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you and good night.